Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the common council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Grove.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Halverson.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Noling.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Weigle.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. Please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Grove.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to item D. We have three public hearings this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read out public hearing number one.
Resolution on the sale of an approximate 670 square foot portion of land on property located at 6200 West National Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Steve Sherman, the manager of planning and zoning, and the first hearing this evening is the sale of land at roughly 62nd and National Avenue. The city-owned land, the policy is that any time the city sells a portion of land or considers it, it should come before a public hearing. The plan commission is also involved to determine that the sale of land and the purpose of that sale meets the city's comprehensive plan. So, the interest here is from the owners of Antigua Restaurant at 6207 National Avenue, and they owned the restaurant at that location for several years, and they're looking to expand with an outdoor dining area in that 670 feet that they would be purchasing. The estimated value is about $10 per square foot, and the offer to purchase has been submitted with that estimate in mind for about $6,700. The area, again, is about 670 square feet, and they would, if sold, they would improve it by submitting a site landscaping plan to show the improvements to the outdoor patio area, the paving, the pavers, small fence, and some landscaping, the patio lights overhead for roughly about 10 to 15 patrons of seating. Furthermore, there would be a certified survey map that would be submitted to consolidate that sale of land property, that 670 feet of small parcel, to the main Antigua Restaurant property, and that would be recorded with the county register of deeds. A licensed extension of premise would also be applied for at a future date. So, plan commission has recommended approval of this transaction as a result of the conformance with the city's master plan or comprehensive plan, which calls for commercial development in this area, and then public notice has been served. Property owners within 200 feet have been notified, and we've received no objections to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman, for the presentation. Are there any questions from the members of the common council on public hearing number one? Not seeing any. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience on public hearing number one? Okay, seeing none, we will close our first public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Conditional use permit for the West Alice West Milwaukee Recreation Department for a proposed indoor recreation facility located at 1300 South 109th Street.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you. So, this is the former Lane Intermediate School on Highway 100, and the nearest intersection being Highway 100 and Greenfield Avenue. The property is about four and a half acres, and it's served intermediate school, grade school purposes over the past decades. The school board has decided to transfer interest to this property to the rec- recreation department, and the rec. department has expressed an interest in running the second rec. facility on the west side of West Alice. So, this would be a second rec. facility, the first being over on 68th and Arthur Street on the east side of the city. This is a bird's eye view, looking southwest. The newest portion of the building that was constructed in about 2016, or 2006, I should say, will be maintained. It's a 17,000 square foot portion, two-story gymnasium and facility here that will be maintained. Everything south of that would be demolished. Just a closer view, looking down on this north. North is to the left, Highway 100 on the top, so you can see the older portion and the portion that would be kept. The grand scheme is down the road for future phases of development, after Phase One being the gymnasium to remain and be renovated for the initial rec. indoor rec. offering, and there'd be a couple phases after that for future expansions for other rec. facility opportunities and programming. There'd be about a one-acre portion of land left over at the very south end of the site, which could be split off and redeveloped for a taxable entity. Just sort of a closer explanation of the phases. Again, the first phase being the gym renovation, that's the part that's being kept, and then everything in yellow is our future phases. This is the second floor above the gymnasium area, but the idea here is to create, maintain the gymnasium, but also use the gymnasium area for multipurpose rooms, offices, conference rooms, and rec. classrooms. And the future phases would include walking and warm water pools, as well as a fitness center. So, after demolition, the site will be stabilized and landscaped. Much of the existing landscaping will be kept in place, but the area where the building is now will be removed and replaced with grass and turf. There'll be also some asphalt terrace areas between the sidewalk and the curb that will be replaced with grass, and other than that, there will be some new landscaping along Highway 100, including new trees along the east elevation. The refuse area is over here, will be relocated to the north side of the building, and will be a brick enclosure with wood doors. Architecturally, the portion of the building that's dashed has been removed, and the portion of the building that would be exposed on the gymnasium will feature a new door and window that's being added on that south elevation. The other elevations will remain the same. So, plan commission has recommended approval. On March 27th, public notice has been served and mailed to property owners within 200 feet. There have been no objections to date, and down below, this is sort of some of the conditions that the planning commission has imposed on the property in advance of any demolition or future phased work, and future phases would come back to the city's planning commission for design review as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Are there any questions from the common council members on public hearing number two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Thank you. Steve, so, the picture on the landscaping, the slide with the landscaping, thank you. There will be no new access to 108th Street by vehicle. The access will remain just how it is currently through 109th Street only?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the common council? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience that have questions on public hearing number two? All right, then we will close our second public hearing, and we will move on to item three. I will ask the clerk to read out our third public hearing.
Conditional use permit for the salon suites, a proposed beauty, wellness, and massage therapy use located at 11575 West Theo Trecker Way.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this property is zoned I-1, or light industrial, and it's been empty for some time, but there's a new owner interested in this property and then, you know, remodeling it for 40 salon suites, which would be basically providing a facility that's ready to move into, providing space for independent, you know, beauty and wellness professionals to lease from and start their business or conduct what they do. The aesthetic salon, like beauty, hair, nails, those types of tenants would be permitted, uses permitted by right. What's triggering this public hearing tonight is the massage therapy component. With wellness, you know, healing, sort of therapeutic things, there's typically massage therapy that's involved, and they would have space here, they would expect to lease to, about 10 to 15% of their tenants would be massage therapy uses. So, what staff has recommended and what the applicants are willing to move forward with is the recommended conditions or criteria, which council has recognized in the past, that the operators be Wisconsin licensed operators, to maintain a log of customer employment or appointments, and that all customers enter and exit through public access points on the building. There'll be two on the north and south end of the building, and then daytime hours not before 7:00 a.m. or after 10:00 p.m. And the owners of the property have volunteered that the business would likely close around 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. at night. This is just an overview of the site plan. It features about 42 parking stalls, and it does meet the maximum parking requirements, not to exceed 42 parking stalls on the site. There will be a ramp that's updated on the front end of the building, an ADA ramp. This will provide, right now there's a secondary ADA ramp back here. That's the means of ADA access or accessibility into the building. This will be added on the front for that, to serve that purpose. The exterior of the building really isn't going to change whatsoever, with the exception of some paint on the exterior and then new signage, and plan commission has reviewed this plan and recommended approval, subject to those recommended conditions for the conditional use criteria. Public notice has been served, and no objections to date. Thanks.
Thank you. Once again, are there any questions from the common council on our third public hearing this evening? All right, then are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number three? Okay, then we will close public hearing number three, and we are going to change our order on our agenda this evening, and we are now going to take up item 15 from the city assessor's office to do an update on the citywide 2024 reevaluation. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Jason Williams. I'm the city assessor, and my number one question on everyone's mind is, what will be the impact of this revaluation on tax bills? So, we've put together this presentation to talk about what the revaluation is, why is it being done, why is it being done now, and then I'm going to go through how, a lot of this is going to be educational for the benefit of the new elected officials, as well as the public. So, I'm going to break down a few of the key processes and make it digestible. So, I'm going to explain how we calculate the tax bill, then I'm going to walk us through some scenarios of what revaluations can do to a tax bill, and so, that's the overall topics we're going to follow. So, most people are familiar with appraisals through lending transactions. So, if you're getting, buying a house or refinancing, the bank will order an appraisal, and the appraisal will come out to the property, and they will write a single report for the value of that single property. When it comes to assessed values, it's a different process. It's mass appraisal, where you're not valuing one single property, you're valuing thousands of property at once. So, that's the key difference. Most people are familiar with the lending transactions. So, the basic objective of a revaluation is to achieve equity in the assessments, so that each property bears its fair share of the tax burden. Now, those two words, "fair share," remember that, because I'm going to come back to that, and I'm going to show you what that actually means, and therein lies the part of the answer as to the impact on the tax bill. Should be said that a revaluation is a mechanism to raise taxes. Taxes increasing is a function of the levy process. This is the assessment process, so it's two separate, independent methods and processes that cities go through, and I'll come back to that again and offer some more information on that. So, why is a revaluation needed? The first thing is that state law mandates that all properties be assessed within 10% of full value, and if assessed values are not within full value, not within 10% full value, that particular municipality is not in compliance with state law. Each year on the tax bill, the Department of Revenue gives to the cities what the assessment level is for that year, and then that amount is put on the tax bill. So, you'll see here in the red circle, the assessment ratio, and you'll see this number. It might be hard to see on the screen or from 30 feet away, but this number is .6641, and what that is telling the public is that your assessed value is 66% of the fair market value. And then, what the tax bill will show you is your assessed value, and that's this 173,800. So, if you were to divide that assessed value by this assessment level, that's how you arrive at this estimated fair market value. So, when an owner opens their tax bill and they look at that number, you want to see it between 90 and 110%, and you know that the assessed value is generally close to fair market value. If it falls outside of that, that's a sign that your city will need to do a revaluation to bring the values up to the market or down to the market, depending on what cycle we're in. So, we've gotten some feedback from the public asking, is this really mandated? Is this really an obligation? And the answer to that is yes. It is mandated by state law. I've put the statute number here. It's chapter 70.05. If anyone wants to read that section to see why is this being obligated, but in short, the state will allow a community to go four years in noncompliance, and then they get their first letter noticing them that you're out of compliance. Then they have a year to bring the assessed values in line with the market. If the city chooses not to do that, the following year, they get their second letter. If the city chooses not to do the revaluation again, then what the state does is they order a revaluation, and they do that by putting out bids, selecting a company to come into the city, do the full revaluation, and then they give the bill to the city. So, that's the stick, the mandate, the obligation to avoid that excessive cost and to let the control of the revaluation go to an outside firm. But, aside from that, the main reason to do a revaluation is to bring assessed values in line with the market. And that goes both ways. So, if the market is declining, and we start seeing a gap between the assessed values and the market, either if it's going up or down, it's my duty to report to the council that we need to do a revaluation, whether it's going up or down. So, this image here is the last 10 years of assessment levels. It may be kind of hard to see, but if you can see my cursor moving, this is the year 2013. This is when the last residential revaluation was done, all the way up to 2023 over here. You'll see this bracket here and allowable range. That is the 20% swing from 90% to 110%. So, this number here is 110%, and then you have 100%, which is considered full value, and then the bottom of that range is 90%. So, you'll see that through these years, 2013, 14, all the way up to 17, the assessment level was right around 100. And now, you'll start seeing these assessment levels dropping, and in the case of the last four years, rather dramatically. What that correlates to is the market going up and the assessed value staying low, and it creates that low assessment level that you see on your tax bill. And so, this is just a visual representation of the market going up and the assessed value not keeping pace with the market. So, the timeline, you might be wondering, okay, why hasn't a revale been done? And we have known for five years now that a residential revaluation is needed. It's been talked about publicly for the past five years. 2019, we began looking at doing the residential revaluation, but we had a staffing issue in the assessor's office. We only had two staff members. So, the plan was to look at staffing, get more people in the office, and begin this work, and then in 2020, we all know what happened. That changed things dramatically, and there was a period of time in 2020 where not many people understood what was going to happen, and that just happened the fall during the budget process. So, it got pushed out another year. In 2021, the city faced some budget issues, and staffing wasn't possible at the time. So, at that time, we're saying, okay, but we need to do the revaluation. The numbers, the values are going up. We need to bring the assessed values in line with the market. So, we put a bid out to three companies to have them do a So we put a bid out to three companies to have them do a full residential revaluation. Of the three, only one company submitted a bid and it was for $3.9 million. And that was not a cost, given the budget constraints at the time, that the city could absorb. So once again, the revaluation gets pushed out. Now we're seeing the market continuing to go, the assessment level continues to drop, we really need to do a revaluation. And so that message was communicated as well. We found the staffing, we started to bring people in to the assessor's office, and by 2023, we were prepared to now finally do the revaluation. So through all of this, we are just watching the values of homes and other real estate going up and up and up each year. So the work has been done, the revaluation is complete, we are now here today. The values are as of January 1st. As we all know, the notices have been sent out. The upcoming dates that are important to keep in mind is open book. We reported on that last week and that's been a lot of the public messaging. That's an opportunity for owners to get their notice, react to it, and then come to the assessor's office and ask questions, review the value, review their property record card. The next step beyond that is a more formal appeal, and that's that board of review. That's a quasi judicial board where you arrive, you enter evidence into the record, present your case that the assessment is wrong and your value and your opinion is correct. Once the board of review adjourns for the year, the assessment process and the appeal process has ended. And the ability to appeal is not available for the balance of the year. So the open book and the board of review is the time to appeal or contest your value. Then in December, the tax bills are mailed out. So to the question of the day, how is this going to impact the tax bill? So we need to first take a look at the components that come together to get us to the tax bill. And that's the tax levy, the total assessed value, which is what, which is what my office deals with, the tax rate, and then finally, the bill. So the annual tax levy is comprised of the annual budgets of five taxing jurisdictions: the city of West Dallas, West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District, Milwaukee Area Technical College, Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewage District, and Milwaukee County. So the budgets of those five taxing jurisdictions together represent the levy. That is the amount of money that needs to be raised through the property tax to cover the services provided by these five entities. That's the money the government needs from the public, the tax levy. Alright, so now we have the first number. So I've put together an example, these numbers are completely made up. I took the names of the taxing jurisdictions out, it's just city, school, county. And over in this right column, I've put some fictitious numbers to show you how the levy gets calculated. So let's say in this year, the city needs to raise $50,000. So that's their... Sorry about that. Okay. So over on the right-hand side is the assessed value for each of these properties. So you'll see the house is valued at $200,000, all the way down to the industrial building at $2 million. You add all those numbers up... The tax rate, you take the levy, and in this case, $125,000. You divide that by the 5 million total assessed value of the community, and this is where you get your tax rate. Some people think in terms of mil rate, which is the tax rate times 1,000. So the mil rate would be 25. So hopefully that doesn't confuse people. I'm gonna stick with tax rate through all this, but some people think in terms of mil rate. Alright, so now we got the third number. Alright, here's a big table with a bunch of numbers. I'm gonna, I'm gonna point you at the key information to see what's going on here. So here we have the five properties. Here we have the assessed values. And if, again, you add those up, you get the 5 million. So that's the total assessed value of the community. We're gonna jump over this column, and you're gonna see the tax rate that we just calculated on the last slide. Now, you take that tax rate and apply it to the value and you get your tax bill. So in this example, that $200,000 house at a tax rate of 2.5% will have a tax bill of $5,000. You'll see that there's two extra columns here. Here we have proportional share of value, and then over here you have proportional share of levy. And another way of saying that is the proportional share of the tax burden. You'll notice that this 4% here, what that means is that the $200,000 assessed value of the house represents 4% of the total assessed value of the community. If you come back over to the tax bill, this $5,000 tax bill for the house represents 4% of the total levy. That is the fair share. That is what you call the fair distribution of the tax burden. That the proportional share of your property should equal the proportional share of what you pay in taxes. So you'll see in this example down here, the industrial building, that value represents 40% of the total value. So they are on the hook for 40% of the tax burden. And these other examples. Now I'm gonna walk you through four more of these slides, and I'm gonna show you different scenarios of what a revaluation can do. And you're gonna see a bunch of numbers, and it might look overwhelming, but really focus on the proportional share, because therein lies the answer to the question of the day, in part. Okay, so we can look at this and we can say, this is the community before a revaluation. Now let's start changing some things to see what could happen. Alright, the first scenario, every assessed value has been doubled. So if you look down here in the bottom, you'll see that that assessed value has gone from 5 million to 10 million for the whole community. Everyone's value got doubled. So that single-family house that was 200,000 is now assessed at 400,000. Over here, the levy of 125,000 has not changed. What has changed is the tax rate. Because to go back to that formula, you're gonna take the levy divided by the total assessed value to get the tax rate. That is then applied to the assessed value to calculate the tax bill. And you'll see that that $5,000 tax bill for the single-family house has not changed. It's still 5,000 even though the assessed value was doubled. You also see that the proportional share is still 4%. Okay? In this example, instead of doubling everyone's value, I've now cut every value in half. So that $200,000 house is now assessed at 100,000. That $2 million industrial building is now worth 1 million. So you'll see that the total assessed value has been cut in half from 5 to 2.5 million. And if you're following along now, you've already jumped to the tax rate and you've seen that the tax rate has doubled. So if you take that 5% and apply it to the $100,000, the tax bill is $5,000. So before the revale, the tax bill was 5,000. After you've doubled the value, it's 5,000. And then in the second scenario, once you've cut the value in half, it's still 5,000. The proportional share hasn't changed. Got two more of these and then we'll summarize. And so those two examples are hypothetical and made up to show that the key element to focus in on is the levy. But in reality, the real estate market is dynamic. The real estate market is made up of different property types that act and change at different rates of change, at different times and different cycles. So not all properties are gonna double or get cut in half. What you're gonna see is one property type may go up quite a bit, another one may go up only a little bit. And you have these different rates of change depending on the market and the property type. So in this scenario, what I've done is I've doubled the total assessed value of the entire community. It's gone from 5 to 10 million dollars. But the question is, is where did that 5 million, that extra 5 million, fall? In the case of this example, everyone went up altogether, but more of it fell on the industrial and the office building, or excuse me, the industrial and restaurant. So if you focus on the proportional share, you'll see that the proportional share of the residential actually went down, even though their assessed value went up. And then you'll, translates to a tax bill going down. So when you're talking to people from other parts of the state and you've heard that they've had a revale, you may have heard them say things like, "My assessed value went up, but my tax bill went down." Or "My assessed value went down, but the taxes went up." Or "The value went up, but the taxes stayed the same." You hear these different reports from different communities. It's because of the shifting share of the burden, depending on what is going on in that particular revale. Alright, one more. Once again, the value has doubled for the whole city. It's gone from 5 to 10 million. And again, you have to ask the question, where did that extra 5 million fall? And in this example, it fell on the single-family, the apartment, and the industrial, while the office and restaurant actually went down in value. Again, shifting values over time. And you'll see that the proportional share of the single-family went up. Before the revale, it's 4%. Now after this revale, it's 5%. So then you would expect to see a larger share of the tax burden paid by that property type. So in this case, in this example, you see the tax bill amount going up. You also see that the office building, its proportional share went down significantly. So its proportional share of the tax burden goes down, and its tax bill goes down. So here's a summary of these, these scenarios. This is the before the revale, the rising, the declining, and then the two shifting scenarios. And if you just scan across from left to right and see how the proportional share can change, that'll tell you the impact of a revaluation on a tax bill. So I did not construct these last two examples to exactly mimic what's going on, but they're similar to what, the shifting one scenario, that's similar to what we saw in the 2019 commercial revaluation. We raised the commercial values up to market levels, and it shifted the burden to commercial. And it offered some relief on the residential side. But because of changes in levies and other taxing jurisdictions, it was a bit of a wash. And I don't think the public really noticed that relief because it, the net result washed it out. This last scenario is closely aligned with what this revaluation has seen. If you've been watching the real estate market, if you've tried to sell a house, tried to buy a house, tried to rent an apartment, you know that the price of homes have gone up steadily and quite a bit in recent years. Rent has gone up. We've also seen the value of industrial properties go up. And we've seen the value of office go down. Retail has remained in aggregate steady and stable, but when you look inside, what you see are two extremes. You see some retail doing very well, and then you see other retail struggling. But in the aggregate, it looks stable. So there's a shift that has occurred with value shifting more towards apartments, industrial, and residential. So this is the last slide. And to sum up and summarize this, there's really three things that go into answering that question. The first thing is changes in the total levy. Right now, we're in the middle of the assessment process, and that gives you one number in that equation to find the tax bill. The second process is the levy process. And that levy takes into consideration five taxing jurisdictions: the city, the school, M A T C, and the other two. You cannot answer the question, what is the exact impact on my tax bill in April? Because a big component of that equation, that process hasn't even begun. It will start this summer. So for example, in the city of West Dallas, during the summer months is when the department heads are asked to put together a budget. Those budgets then go to administration and it's reviewed, and then eventually it makes its way to the elected officials for them to review. And then there's a public hearing process, and then there's a vote to approve it in November. So that equation, that, that number in calculating the tax bill won't be known until November. The other thing is what is going on with the other taxing jurisdictions? What are some of the levy implications of the other four taxing jurisdictions? And then shifting market values. Seeing things shift back and forth between property types through the market cycles and the revales, that is gonna have an impact on the tax bill. This last topic here, tax appeals, it's, it's kind of an overlooked topic. You don't hear much about that. As an agenda item, you're gonna see that come through as claim of excessive taxation for a property. And the process starts in the assessor's office and eventually will go to the attorney And the process starts in the assessor's office and eventually will go to the attorney's office. So the issue is with the high-valued properties. And if the value is lowered multiple millions of dollars for, say, a property, that levy's not changing. What's changing is the total assessed value comes down and that burden gets redistributed to everyone else. So the appeal process is a right of property owners, but it's important to take care, to defend values, to make sure we're not shifting the burden to other people unnecessarily. So it's not a major component. The biggest component is the levy. So I guess in closing, what I would say is that the assessment process is one component of this, and then separate and independent of that is the levy process. As much as I would love to take a call from the public and be able to tell them to an exact penny the impact this is going to have, I would love to do that because I fully understand this has implications with escrow accounts, this has implications with budgeting, fixed incomes, and just knowing what to expect. I get it. We understand. But because we don't have all the numbers to make these calculations, we cannot give an accurate answer. And if the answer is not accurate, in my opinion, that is misleading. And I don't think anyone here wants to mislead the public in April for something that's known in November. So I sympathize, I understand, and we try to explain this process the best that we can. But unfortunately, the answer is, we don't know in April. So with that said, any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Williams. Does the common council have any questions on the presentation?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keen.
I don't have any questions. I just really wanted to thank you. That was very educational and informative, and I thank you for putting together that slide.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? All right. That will conclude the presentation then. This was not a public hearing, so we are now, we are now going to go on to item E, public participation. There are cards, if you wish to speak, on the back table. I think there was some signage out front asking you to fill them out so we can have your name and address for our official record. This is where the council may receive information from the members of the public. We limit this to a 30-minute period, but we can extend it a little bit. Each speaker must announce their name and address. Please fill out the card and limit your comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. The council may not take action on the topics raised by the speakers and cannot discuss the topics with the speakers. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Have you filled a card out? Okay. If you do wish to speak, please come up to the podium and click the right button on the base of the microphone, which should light up a green light. On the base. There you go.
My name is Mark Di Battista, 9422 West Harding Place. I would perhaps be in a minimum of people, but I don't use social media, I don't tweet, I don't have a LinkedIn account. I wouldn't have heard about this meeting tonight unless I had contacted the city with some questions. Now, I don't expect everything to be in writing. I wish it could be still. But a letter was sent out, and it was already in the mail. It would have been nice if there would have been some information included on the back of that sheet to include this meeting and maybe other future things that affect this. The reason I say this is when an assessment is arrived, when an assessment is sent to me, my first thought, like many other people I'm assuming, is how is this going to affect my taxes? Now, the presentation you gave, I wasn't clear at what stage the actual average citywide assessment will be available when those numbers are finalized. But my point is this, a long time ago, in my technical career, I was told, when you write something, write it for the reader, not for yourself. If I made a report and I had to go back to my own memory a year later to determine what answers were to some questions, my report wasn't conclusive, wasn't comprehensive. If we already had a mailing going out, I would appreciate things to still come out in writing with some kind of a schedule. I will try to follow up after this and see where was I missing the boat? Why am I not being aware of things that are happening with the city, in my city? And that's on me. But I would just leave you with that comment. Please think ahead what impact these notifications have on the citizenry and look at it from their perspective and perhaps add a little bit more information instead of just, the biggest thing that I got out of that letter was how I can appeal. Well, what does that make me think? That makes me start wondering, how much is this going to cost me and how desperate am I going to be to appeal? Whereas, I think some other information could have been included, the mailing was already there. So I look at that as an opportunity lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public participation?
My name is Gordon Boltz. I live 2411 South 93rd Street. Been here in West Dallas for, I think, 32 years now, I think. Anyway, the presentation was very good. Explained a lot. It answered so many of questions of what all this means and how it affects, you know, affects us. But a couple of things came up right away when I looked at this was, A, like a 69% or 59%, almost 60% assessment, you know, increase from the last one was like, that's a shock. I mean, like, it's like, what went up 60%? I know a lot of things have gone up, but the other thing was, it says the reasons for the assessment on here, it says improvements, revalue, and land revalue. I haven't, unless you know of improvements that somehow somebody else did to my house, I haven't done any improvements. How did this get, how did they determine what improvements, how they affected the assessed value when, as far as I know, we haven't made any improvements? Or what do they consider improvements? So somehow, I'll be going to one of these meetings that they have to ask that question specifically, but that was, it's like, okay. And it was like, the way this came out, it was almost like, did somebody just take a dart and say, okay, we're going to throw this number out to these people and say, well, see what sticks? It's just like, you know, in other words, the letter was kind of a shock. It came as like, no warning, here you are, here's your assessment, well, good luck and, you know, tough luck, you know? So that was my, that's my comment. Sorry.
Thanks very much. Anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
My name is Mike Cody. The address is 1725 South 71st Street. And just like this gentleman over here before me, I get this letter here, and I'm absolutely in total shock when I get this thing. And then 24 hours later, I happen to hear about this meeting where I can get, where I can get information and speak my mind about it. I mean, it would be nice if, you know, if I get a letter like this that would say, this would be effective next year, so I at least have a year to prepare, instead of me thinking my taxes are going to absolutely double, you know, because I am on a limit, I am on a fixed income, and it's an extreme hardship for me. And the thought of me having my property taxes double is a real kick in the ribs, so... I mean, going forward, it would be nice to give me a little more time to prepare for such a magnificent change, especially if what's going to happen, if what I'm thinking is going to happen. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Cody. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Matt Coip. I'm 1643 South 63rd Street. I just have a couple of questions and a comment, just kind of centered around the communication. I wish there was a little bit more detail in terms of the formula for which my property was assessed at an increase. Is it comparable properties that are sold in the area? Is it, certainly wasn't somebody coming through my house and inspecting it and saying, wow, this is worth a lot more. So I guess I'd like a little bit more detail in terms like, the methodology? I get we got to back into like a total tax amount. That's cool, I get it, I understand mill rates. But like, why does mine go up 80,000, why does somebody else's go up 30,000? Are you using comparables? How do I see some sort of data around that, that I could use to understand that it makes sense, that I could look at it? There's a link on the bottom of the page that highlights going to an internet site for the Department of Revenue to look at other properties? That's a mess. I don't know how many people have actually gone to that site and tried to relate it to my property, my assessment, and what the change is to my personal assessment, but like, clearly there's some missing instructions here, like the technical writer gentleman said. Like, how do I actually equate it, you know? Did five houses in my neighborhood sell for $220,000, and that's why mine's 213? No? I don't know. It just is, it's a number on a piece of paper. So I can't connect it really to the why, right? And so a website that goes somewhere that doesn't offer any instructions on, there's a certain spot on that site that you can go into and plug your address in, and that'll give you some relational information to you? That would help. The second part is on the appeal process and kind of jumping into an appeal process, kind of goes with my first point. You know, I want to go meet with them for the open book. I don't even know what you based it on, so I don't even know whether I should disagree or agree with you. So why would I have to go to an appeal process to figure out whether I disagree or agree? Where's the detail on why you came up with this number for my property? You should have sent that to me with the letter or made it available in some other way, so that I know whether I want to spend my time in a disagreement or whether I actually kind of support it because there's some logic to it. It's completely absent, right? I don't know what a minor error or a misunderstanding is because I have zero understanding of why I got the number. How does, how do I know? Why can I come in and meet with you and say, I'm upset with you and I have a minor error or a misunderstanding in why we look at my property as $213,000 versus $129,000? So there's a little bit more, I think, that could have been done on like that client service aspect to citizens on this in terms of the why the number, why your number's your number and what it means. And then the final part I just want to say is like, if you got 10 years, there could be a time where you could sync this up a little bit better to knowing what the levy is and the approval process is. Can't you just select a year and just do your work doing these assessments citywide and put it somewhere in proximity, calendar-wise and choreographed, that you could actually tell somebody, like, hey, the mill rate's going to be this because we know what the number is already, and so we're adjusting it? So don't freak out, everybody. Or freak out.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council under public participation this evening?
So my name is Tiffany Stark, 6414 West Burnham Street, West Dallas, Wisconsin, 53219. So I've had 24 hours to calm down, and I saw the mayor last night at the police community meeting and got, and found out about this because I'm glad I was able to come. I appreciate your presentation. I appreciate the new members that are here now. But I will be honest, I'm nervous as hell. I'm a single parent. I have to budget, and I don't have any clue, and I have to sit here for eight months not knowing anything until the last minute. And you want to teach people to be fiscally responsible, but you're going to give us a bill in December and we're supposed to pay the bill in January. That's my issue. And I have great knowledge, I have two degrees, I'm a social worker, I'm good at psychology, sociology, political science. When it comes to this, these numbers, I have no clue what any of this means. I don't know if I'm getting screwed or not. I don't know how much to save. And I'm really concerned because we have other things coming up. We already got hit with all of the food and gas, all these other increases, plus we have the school referendum coming up in November, plus We Energies wants to hike our bill again. And it's like, where are we supposed to get all this money? Am I just supposed to go in my backyard and pick it off the tree? I mean, this is for real. This is worrying. I spend all my time going to work in the doctor because I'm stressed the hell out. And that's more money that I have to pay going to the doctor because I'm stressed. I'm concerned about my parents that are, they sold their house, but they are renting. And every time I turn around, I hear that their rent is going up, but they don't have nursing home needs, and they can't afford, you know, assisted living because they make too much, but then they don't make enough to afford a market value assisted living apartment. So where are these people supposed to go? What are they supposed to do? Just disappear? So these are some hard things, and I just wish the presentation would be better so we could prepare. Instead of throwing this down our throat, not giving us any time, but here, you need to come up with this money. It's very unprofessional, and I know you don't have the numbers until you have them, but you can do better to, for us constituents to be prepared with you want your money. Thank you. And this is in a very calmer state. You should have saw me yesterday. And I'm also left a message for the assessor's office. I'm waiting for a call back. I do work, so I don't know how I'm going to get the call, but I would like to do that open book thing, so I will be, I will be looking forward to your call. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public participation?
Amy Rose Murphy, 1520 South 76th Street. Thank you for your presentation. I must admit, though, this is the first property I've ever owned that did not include like a 200-point checklist. Every other property I've ever owned, when I've gotten the assessment, it tells you, you were assessed based on these things. Then I knew what to appeal. I don't want to keep preaching what everyone else did, but I don't understand why we didn't have that. I've never experienced that, and this is the fourth house I've ever owned. And it just kind of boggles my mind that that's not included in that. And my sentiments are with everyone else. I've also never lived in a city, and I've done a little homework, and it seems like Milwaukee, West Dallas is being just like Milwaukee. We have never, I have never experienced where residents have to pay for construction on the roads. Sidewalks I get, but there's a total of like four cities in all of Wisconsin where we charge residents to pay for the road. I think that's absolutely ludicrous. You are, everything that they have said, everything that they have said.
Thank you. Any other participants in public participation this evening?
Yeah, my name is Lorraine Hayden, 8425 West Slappam. I've already called a Realtor. I want to know what my house is really worth because, which $100,000 went up, my house is not worth that. It's an old house, it's not fixed up, it's not fancy, it's ridiculous. And I'll probably have to sell the house because I can't afford to have my taxes doubled to $6,000. That's ridiculous for an old house in West Dallas that's 120 years old, well, it's actually 1902. It's an old house. We haven't had money to fix, put new windows in or do almost any, I don't want improvements in saying we're doing. We're not doing improvements, we're just doing basic painting and cleaning and, you know, doing the driveway and put a new roof on because we had to. But this is ridiculous. And I think we're going to have a lot of people selling their houses because when they see what the taxes bill is, they're going to be, they're going to be getting out of here. Thank you.
Thank you. Saw somebody else up?
Hi, my name is Scott Drohlzhegen. I live at 1521 South 75th Street. First of all, thank you for the presentation that was helpful, but I also want to echo what everyone else here has said tonight, and it's, it was a shock. My valuation went up so much. My biggest question is, how did they determine fair market value? Who's, where's that coming from? I have a bank appraisal from two years ago that's considerably less than what my reassessment is, and they came in the house, there was, somebody else said it, you know, nobody's come into the house, nobody knocked on the door, and the lack or fact that there was no early notification... there was no early notification. It would have been nice to know that this was coming before it did. And maybe I missed some of the communication from the city. I'd be the first to admit that I feel ill-informed on what's going on in the city. This is going to prompt me to be a little bit more informed. The website is good and you find your way through to the parts that you're looking for, but I really got a problem with a $130,000 increase in my assessment. I have a tenant. I try to keep her rent nominal. That's going to make a big change if the taxes change. I understand that, you know, if all else remains the same with the city and expenditures and the budget and everything else, I'm expecting that my tax bill doesn't change too much, but I can assume that it's probably going to go up. I just hope it doesn't go up as much as, you know, the, the mill rate that I have in the house right now. I'll make it unaffordable. I'll have to sell and I'll happily take the overage if I can get it. I'm not sure that the fair market value is an accurate value, especially compared to what the bank says they'll loan for the house. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public participation this evening? Okay, then we will close public participation. Thank you, everybody, for attending. And that is how our democracy should work, so I am thankful for those of you being here and those of you that spoke. Moving on to item F, our standing committees will be meeting during recess. They will be meeting in this room when we break for recess. Just one quick thing under the mayor's report, two quick things under the mayor's report this evening. I would just want to congratulate all the members of the West House Police Department that were promoted this afternoon. I know Alderman Turner and I were at the, the ceremony and I just was there when a lot of them were sworn in and it's very encouraging to see them using their training and their skills and learning from their mentors and becoming better officers and leaders within that department. It is one of the most critical functions in our community and it's, it's always just a rewarding and a positive feeling when you see deserving people being promoted and growing within. So I want to congratulate the seven or eight officers that were promoted this afternoon. And I also wanted to just remind people that we do offer notification services on the city's website where you can get emails or text messages on community events, meetings, agendas, all kinds of things. So I know there were a few comments about not getting information and we, we do try to message that out through various channels, but I would just like to encourage everybody to take a look at the city website and you can sign up for all kinds of different categories of notifications based on what's going on in your city. So that does conclude the mayor's report this evening. We'll move on to item H. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderwoman Keane.
I just wanted to remind folks that live around CHR Hansen that tomorrow they will be holding an open house at 5:00 PM until 6:30. They're going to talk about the expansion projects that is happening, timelines, what they're even doing over there, what it's going to bring to the city. So if you do live around CHR Hansen, feel free to show up. Again, that'll be at 5:00 PM until 6:30. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I move for approval of the minutes of our April 16, 2024 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Were there any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. We do not have any standing committee reports under section J.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Do any council members wish for separate action on any of our consent agenda items? Seeing none, then I move for approval of item K, the consent agenda.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Grove.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Alderson.
Aye.
Keane.
Aye.
Novak.
Aye.
Nolling.
Aye.
Rhode.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I move that the council stand in recess until the conclusion of our committee meetings.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in recess.
Okay. All in favor of item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes, is adopted, excuse me. Item number nine is a resolution to approve the agreement to provide emergency medical services to Wisconsin State Fair Park for the 2024 season.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number nine is adopted. Item number 10 is a resolution.
Could we just call a point of order that if there's conversation or items to be addressed, to address it in the hallway?
In the audience, if you have any questions for staff, could you please take them out in the hallway, please? And Kale, that microphone's still on too. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item number, did we, we passed item number nine? Correct? Yes. Okay. Item number 10 is a resolution to authorize the purchase of one Ford F-550 XL truck chassis and a Simcoe 2400 DT drill rig for tooling for a total sum of $238,692.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Resolution is adopted. Item number 11 is another resolution. This is to accept a proposal of Egglehoff Lawn Mower Service for furnishing and delivering six Grasshopper 335B 61-inch ride-on lawn mowers for a total sum of $89,607 and, $89,607.41. Do I have a motion from the committee?
Move to approve.
And a second? And a second, thank you. Any further discussion on item number 11? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? 11 is adopted. Item number 12 is a resolution to accept the proposal of Bobcat Plus Incorporated for furnishing and delivering three Bobcat Tool Cat attachments for a total sum of $16,060.75.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Item number 12 is adopted. Item number 13 is a resolution to update the public swimming pool fees to conform to state law.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 13 is adopted. Item number 14 is a resolution to approve the 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as CAPER, with a community block grant program, the CDBG program.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? 14 is adopted. Item number 15 is an update, which we had already, was the update from the city assessor's office on this 2024 citywide reevaluation. Do any members of the committee have anything to add to Jason's excellent presentation?
Mr. Chair.
Alderperson Haas, Keane, excuse me.
No, I thought it was, again, a great presentation. I think staff listened with open ears on the feedback. I think the questions that most people presented at the podium were probably the same questions that majority of the city have of where did the value come from? And without making assumptions, Rebecca, I'm guessing that there's going to be continued and continued communication and education sharing and items like that for staff to fill in some of those gaps and address some of the concerns, whether it be an FAQ or something along those lines.
I'm going to add that many of you know I recently purchased a home. My wife and I moved to the west side and the assessment on the home that we purchased went up by over $100,000, but it is within 6%. Now... Oh, sorry. Sorry. My wife and I recently purchased a home. Assessed value went up $100,000 and it is now within like 6% or 7% of what we paid for it. So it was undervalued. I'm assuming that they use, among other things, comparables, but I guess that'll be a question for staff. Any further discussion on the citywide reevaluation? Okay. Hearing none, I think we're done with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administration committee is adjourned. Thank you.
Public Works is now in session. All five members are present. Start out with item 16, Resolution 2024-0162. Resolution to amend an existing professional services contract with Interstate Roof Systems Consultants Incorporated to provide design engineering services and quality compliance observations for the roof replacement at the West Dallas Public Library for an amount of $11,800.
Move to...
Go ahead and move and approve.
I didn't say it completely.
I didn't either. Go ahead, Suzette.
Okay. Move to approve.
And I second.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, Resolution 2024-0169. Resolution on the vacation and discontinuance of an improved alley between West Electric Avenue and West Mobile Street west of South 54th Street.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Haas.
I have a question on this one. I know where this is. Why are we doing this one?
This is a, a small alley, 14-foot wide alley that heads east-west. Originally, back when the area was first platted, it was an L alley. We've since made it, the alley complete north to south, so we don't really need the L part of the alley, this little east-west section of it. And some of the business owners in the area were questioning why it's still there. So in order to try to lessen the burden out on DPW, we don't really need it for functionality. We will have a small easement for the storm sewer that's in there, but the pavement can be removed, grass can be put there. We don't need to maintain that anymore, so.
Thank you. That sounds good to me. I move approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, Resolution 2024-0168. Resolution on the vacation and discontinuance of an improved alley between West Lincoln and West Grand Street and within the 2200 block of South 108th Street and South 109th Street.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 19. Resolution 2024-0175. Resolution to approve bid of Pro Electric Incorporated for street lighting conversion in various locations in the city of West Dallas in the amount of $1,667,254.17.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, item 20. Resolution 2024-0176. Resolution to approve bid of MJ Construction Incorporated for private property work in the amount of $680,579.
I'll move approval.
It's been moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 21. Resolution 2024-0177. Resolution to authorize the purchase of four 2024 Ford Maverick all-wheel-drive pickup trucks from Ewald Automotive Group of Hartford for a sum of $121,780. Oh, that's, thank you. It's okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 22. Resolution 2024-0182. Resolution to accept energy incentive funds for new Department of Public Works facility from Focus on Energy.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 23. Resolution 2024-0194. Resolution to amend an existing professional service contract with R.A. Smith to provide construction management of private property improvements for an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 24. Resolution 2024-0219. Resolution to adopt a grant application from the U.S. Department of Transportation's multimodal project discretionary grant, better known as MPDG, program for the I-94 east-west corridor modernization project.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Last one. Item 26. Resolution 2024-0097. What's that? Oh, 20, I'm sorry, 25. Thank you. Resolution on the sale of an approximate 670-square-foot portion of land on property located at 6200*West National Avenue.
To approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.
All right, the Economic Development Committee will come to order. Please note that all alderpersons are present. Item 26. Resolution approving a 2,000 Neighborhood Association focus grant to the Liberty Heights Park Neighborhood Association.
Park Neighborhood Association.
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, yes. Just a point of order that I'm going to abstain as I'm still on the board of Liberty Heights.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And one abstained? All right, the ayes have it. Item 27, Resolution approving an amendment to the neighborhood's small grant agreements and grant applications. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I do have a discussion item on this. Steve, I was reading through the new agreements, and I know there's been a lot of work between staff and the established neighborhood associations on this process. So it looks like now, within the agreement, it can be used of 20% allows for, let's see, 20%, or 10% for food costs, 10% for neighborhood association promotional items, and then in the other grant, 20% up to administration costs.
It's all, the food and the promotional, the 10%, the 10% are all under that admin umbrella, but we just wanted to add some clarity within the grant agreements and the applications to provide some opportunity for supportive types of administrative, things like food or promotional items, that helps support the neighborhoods endeavor to complete their projects or activities within the neighborhood. So as we all know, whenever you have a successful event, food helps, it brings people together, but it's all in support of the project or the event that they hope to implement.
Okay, and so clearly they would still have to show receipts, get reimbursement of that, and then I was just a little bit confused on the record. So at one point, it was stating that, you know, the proof of spending submitted to the city reimbursement must not be older than 30 calendar days, the time of submission, and another, one of the agreements talks about, you know, letting know what the progress is, especially more of the focus grant. And then there's also a year-end reporting, which makes sense, 12 months of bank statements, five to six photos, projects. So it almost, unless I'm reading it wrong, it kind of seemed like it's going to be double reporting. So if a project is wrapped up, let's say in July, they send the pictures that it's completed, they send all the contracting receipts, would that stay on file then, where it's not have, it's not having to be resent at the end of the year with all the other year-end, you know, the 12-months bank statements and?
Yeah, the monthly reporting is really only if they're doing, like say if they have an activity next month on May 1st, we just want them to submit their receipt that shows, here's what we did in May, the May of '24, and then we'll take that, those receipts, review them, ensure that they're eligible reimbursements. So it's really just submitting your receipts for projects or services rendered within that month, month-to-month. And then at the year-end, we really want to celebrate neighborhoods, so, you know, it's sort of the reason why we want pictures and sort of a year-end kind of dashboard, so that we can, we can put together a dashboard of all the neighborhoods, and here's what each one's done, and here's what they've done collectively in the city, really to sort of celebrate their progress and growth, and hopefully inspire more neighborhoods, associations within the city.
And then one last item is, I know there's been some feedback on the application process within OpenGov, that some of the information isn't maybe quite as clear as it could be, and I'm happy to have found out at the three-leaf ribbon cutting that we now have a dedicated resource for neighborhood associations, Suzanne?
Suzanne Singh.
Singh.
Yeah.
So that is going to put us in a great step, and I'm hoping that direction from department heads is to work closely with the neighborhood associations, especially those that are up and thriving, to take some of that feedback of, I know that there's certain things that just we can't do, right? It would be nice to have, where he would just give you 10, you know, 2,000 bucks and throw it in an account. It's just, we can't. So, you know, working together with some of that feedback, I'm guessing that's part of her role.
Absolutely. She is going to be the go-between, the person that, you know, works with neighborhood associations on a daily basis, making sure that, you know, we maintain our associations that we have, but also growing the future, and she's a great addition. We look forward to, for everyone to meet her and work with her in the future.
Wonderful. That's all I had on that. Any other discussions on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 28, New Class B Tavern and Public Entertainment License for Schatzke's II DBA Schatzke's County Rock Bar II, 6922 West Orchard Street, Agent Brandon Balaka. All right, can you come up to the podium, please, and turn on your microphone?
Can you hear me?
Yes. So you're obtaining the old canes.
Correct.
And has the occupancy and health inspection been done?
We did our initial inspection. We're still waiting to finish that process. I have my list of things that are currently being fixed and addressed and worked on.
Okay. Now, I do see that you have notated that doors and windows will be closed at 9:00 PM.
Correct. It was brought to my attention by a couple of people that there was a noise issue with the elderly building behind us, and I don't want to make anybody upset. It's just a simple, close the doors, maintain it, have security personnel that does their job.
Perfect.
And prevents people from going outside to, you know, it's one thing to outside the front door and smoke on 70th there, where it's a heavy traffic, street traffic area, but out back by the dumpsters and in a parking lot, that's not an acceptable area to do that.
Great, and that was part of the reason that I brought that up, is, you know, besides just the noise leaving, just people congregating outside of where they smoke with the apartment complex being right across the street and then behind.
Correct.
And then, so this is a split level. You have the hall upstairs. Is that where the bands will be?
Correct. Bands will be upstairs. So the downstairs is just going to be like a regular restaurant.
Okay.
Actually, a chef by trade. So that's going to also help alleviate some of that noise as well, because the live music is going to be upstairs in a hall where it's completely enclosed.
And then that space will be rented out for the hall for events and items like that?
We're going to have it available for events like weddings, things of that nature.
And with the bar upstairs, is that staffed by your employees?
It will be staffed by our employees, correct, anytime it's in use, correct.
So if there's a party, then there would be potentially a bouncer, and the bartender would be the one serving all alcohol.
Correct.
To avoid any potential incidents of an out-of-control party leading to.
Correct.
Something potentially bad or tragic. Let's see. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Brandon, could you just, you mentioned you were a chef. Could you just maybe go over your background, maybe in management or other alcohol-related businesses you've worked at?
Yeah, absolutely. So for the past two years, I was the chef at the Milwaukee Sail Off, which is located at the end of Erie Street, right across the street from Summerfest. Prior to that, I was the general manager there for 10 years. I actually, there's a year gap in there where I left, took a sales job. And when I found out the new chef that they'd taken over was kind of not doing his job, I called my buddy and I said, hey, I've got some bad, I've heard some bad things about it, and he's like, yeah, he's not so good. So I came back and I took on the role of chef and managed to bring it back to where it was pre-COVID almost.
So you're familiar with all the alcohol-related regulations about buying from licensed wholesalers?
Oh, yes, absolutely, sorry, yeah. As a general manager, in that aspect, I did deal with all the liquor vendors and beer vendors.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to share with the committee that I received a call today from the post commander, Dale, and he is not able to be here tonight, but he wanted me to express to all of you that he is very much in favor of this applicant.
Thank you.
I'm a retired Marine myself. I think that helped a little.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I'll take a phrase out of an old alderman's book, because I'll probably sound like a parakeet during these, but clearly, if you have issues, work with the police department, please let them do what they do best. There's, I don't think that there's ever a time that you're overreacting of when to call the police. So again, it's just kind of going to be my PSA for all of these.
I agree with you 100%, and in the past, it used to be a bar would be afraid to call the police, but now, working with the tavern league, if the bar initiates a police contact, it doesn't count against you.
Right.
So there's no reason to not use all the available services at your disposal.
Right. All right, is there a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, number 29, Conditional Use Permit for the West Dallas West Milwaukee Recreation Department for a Proposed Indoor Recreation Facility Located at 1,300 South 109th Street.
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item 30, Conditional Use Permit for the Salon Suites, A Proposed Beauty Wellness and Massage Therapy Use Located at 11575 West Theo Trecker Way. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Anything else come before the committee?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Calling Public Safety Committee to order item 31, R. 2024-0216, Resolution Authorizing the Health Department to Accept Funding from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services for Public Health Vending Machine Supplies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I have discussion. Is Bob Lai Show here? Okay. Hello there. I just have a question for you on the vending machines itself. How often will we need to be, do you have data on the restocking?
The data on the distribution at this point?
Yeah, yes.
So we've actually been hitting it pretty hard with the actual distribution. The machines have been in place for just a little over a month, and we've already distributed a little over 800 products. And so we're looking at that between both the city of West Dallas Health Department location and as well at CMS, we're getting a lot of traffic at CMS in particular. For those not aware, that's Community Medical Services on national. And so the initial bullets of funding that we got through the grant, we still have funding left, however, we're going through it at such a rate, we just need to kind of plan for the future. And so it's tough to say what we're going to look like two months from now. It might be just the excitement of a new machine at this point, and so we don't know if we're, things are going to kind of level out in the near future, but we need to be prepared.
Okay, and my second question is, is there certain products in there that are going faster than other products?
Well, I'd say both in our can boxes, as well as fentanyl test strips are going pretty well.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's my only question. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question without being on the committee?
Oh, absolutely, Alderman Keen.
Bob, Alderman Grisham can kind of hit on some of the questions I had on this. So right now, all that is covered by the grant that was received, the funding of it, the restocking, is grant, proceeds?
Curly.
Okay, and then what is being reevaluated is at what rate it can be restocked, and then where those funds would come from?
So as some of you might know, and if you're not aware, the actual, the city is actually an awardee of essentially the state or the national federal opioid settlement funds, and so through that, we actually have access to dollars, actually for the next 18 or so years, and so we have it in the budget to actually use those funds to continue to essentially resupply those products, and really just looking at ways that we can continue to sustain, you know, the products.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 32, R. 2024-0218, Resolution Authorizing the Health Department to Accept and Expend Funding from State of Wisconsin, Wisconsin Department of Health Services to Address Social Isolation and Loneliness. I'm sorry.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. It looks like that's it for public safety. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening. We will call the common council back to order, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderman Grove.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Halverson.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Noling.
Aye.
Here.
Wrote.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. We will begin with the Administration Committee, and I will ask the clerk to read out that report.
Administration Committee Recommended Adoption of Items 8 through 14.
Mayor Devine, I move in accordance with the committee report.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderman Grove.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Halverson.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Novak.
Here.
Aye.
Noling.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Next up, we have the Public Works Committee, and I'll ask that report to be read out.
The Public Works Committee Recommended Adoption of Items 16 through 25.
Mayor Devine, I move in accordance of the committee report.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the Public Works Committee?
Mayor Devine?
Yes, Alderman Grove.
Again, just to, on item 16, abstention for me, please.
Got it. Any other discussion? Wait, item 16?
I think that was for 26.
26. Unless you have a company that cleans the library.
Wrong one.
26. Next committee. All right, no worries. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderman Grove.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Halverson.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Novak.
Aye.
Noling.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Turner.[1650.58]